Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Siomo.
Present.
Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Jackson. Counselor Lamatina. Counselor Linehan.
Yeah.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yeah.
Counselor Murphy.
Yeah.
Counselor O'Malley.
Yeah.
Counselor Presley. Counselor Wu. Counselor Yancy. And Counselor Zegum. We have a forum, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I've been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. I would ask at this time that all city councilors and guests to please rise. I invite Counselor Siomo to the podium to introduce today's clergy. After the invocation is delivered, I would ask all members and guests to remain standing as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance that will be led by Counselor Siomo. Counselor Siomo.
Thank you, President Linehan. Good afternoon, everyone. It's a great pleasure that I have today to introduce to you Rabbi Naftali Beer. Rabbi Beer has been a rabbi since 1976. He came to Boston 26 years ago. He's a founder of the Kolel of Greater Boston, an academy of Talmudic research. Five years ago, the Kolel completed construction on the first synagogue built in Boston in over 50 years at 62 Cummings Road in my district. The Kolel is an educational and social research center for greater Boston community. Thousands of men, women, and children have participated in its programs. It serves as a postgraduate center for rabbis who are training for community leadership position. To date, the Kolel has graduated over 30 fellows. Brighton is also home to the largest concentrated area of Jewish people in New England, doing large part to the great work of the Kolel. Rabbi Beer and his wife Judith have six children and 23 grandchildren, and the last time the rabbi was here, I think he had only 16 grandchildren. So, his family's been busy. With great pleasure, Rabbi Beer.
Thank you, Mark. Honorable President, honorable council members, I'd like to share with you a story. It's really a metaphor. We'll call it a story. There's a husband and wife that have a loving relationship, 50 years of marriage, and one day, the husband passes away, and the wife moves in with his daughter and son-in-law. He has one request to his daughter. Please make soup the way Mama made the soup. I want to feel her. I'm so bereft. At least if I eat her soup every day for lunch, I'll feel better. So, the daughter obliges. He makes the pea soup one day, the corn soup one day, the lentil soup, and he always says, "It's delicious," but it's missing something. One day, she's making a vegetable soup, and while she's cooking and preparing, her son falls down the stairwell, and she runs over to her child, and he's bleeding, and she takes care of him. By the time she gets back to the kitchen, the soup has been burned. It's charred. And a father comes home, and he says, "Dad, today, I can't give you anything. The soup is burned." He says, "No. He said, "No. Every day I waste the Mama soup. Please give me Mama soup." He doesn't even have to put it into a bowl. It's charred. It was on a plate, and she runs out of the room, out of the dining room, comes back 20 minutes later. He's crying. He's licking the plate, just like Mama made the soup. Just like Mama made the soup. The point of the story is, he never tasted the soup. He only tasted one thing. He tasted his wife's love and dedication and time and effort into what he put into every bowl of soup that she made for him. And when he ate his daughter's soup, it was good. It was delicious, but it was missing the main ingredient, love of his wife, the dedication of his wife, and that's what he tasted. And this idea is the same idea that we manifested by a question we can ask. What's the difference between saying "thank you" and sending a thank you card? Everyone says "thank you." Very often, it's perfunctory. When I take the time to write a thank you card, I'm saying to myself, when I write it, what effort was put into what that person did for me? What love, what dedication, what caring, what finances was put into it? When I send a thank you card, it's not perfunctory. It's not about me saying, "Thank you. Well, you did this for me. I appreciate it. Do it for me another time, and I'll tell you thank you again." I'm thinking about the effort you put into something for me. I come today to represent our community, our beloved city, to say thank you to all your council members for the effort, the time, the dedication, the love you've put into our city and your caring for every one of us. And this is something we always have to think about, and that's the idea of prayer. When we pray to God, the main idea of prayer is to say to God, "Thank you. You gave me a beautiful world, a beautiful blue sky, beautiful foliage, beautiful neighbors, beautiful friends, and above all, you gave me. You put me in your world because you need me to do something in your world that no one else can, because otherwise why am I here?" And when we think like that and we absorb that idea, we have self-esteem and self-validation, and then we can think about what the needs of others are. And it's always important to appreciate this idea, what we have been given by others and respected by God. Our mayor is not well. I never met him, but I'm living here long enough to know a lot about him, and he always struck me, maybe he was a person that lived the life of Boston. His life was not his own life. His life was the life of Boston. His life was always, how can I make my city a better place for everyone? How can I help everyone in my city? How can I make it a more beautiful environment for everyone to live in? And that's the way he lived, and I offer prayer on behalf of all of us that God should give him comfort and serenity in these days when he has so much needs it. And I pray together with you that God gives us the strength, the fortitude, the understanding of the love everyone has for us and the love we have for our community, and by doing that, we can create a much more beautiful Boston community than we can say.
Thank you, Rabbi Beer, for your very warm words and inspiring message, and at this time, Counselor Siomo will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Counselor Siomo will escort Rabbi Beer from the chamber. We have one presentation, which is wholly inclusive. It's probably the most special presentation that we make each year at the Boston City Council, and I would like to ask the recipients of the 2014 Shattuck Awards to please make their way down here to the, in front of the deus, and we'll recognize you as you all come down. I'd also like to ask Counselor Jackson. We made presentations individually in the Curly Room, and two of the recipients were not there but are here now, and I'd like Counselor Jackson to make a presentation to Tim. And, do you want to do it down there? And then I'll ask Counselor Yancy to do it to Dion Irish. And Sam Tyler, is he here with us? Sam, please. I'd like to thank you, Municipal Research Bureau, for recognizing the recipients of the 2014 Shattuck Awards and for instituting this idea some 29 years ago. Someone who has worked in public service for nearly 40 years, it's truly humbling when you are recognized and brought forth in front of all your peers, because it takes 18,000 of us to make this city work. And this year, these are the best of the lot, and we're very proud of them, and I'm honored to be the president and to be part of this celebration and recognition of the awards. Counselor Jackson, you have the mic.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. It is my pleasure to introduce and award this commendation to Timothy Nagaoka. And Tim has been an advanced work-class teacher. For those who are not currently in school, when we were in school, it was called Gifted and Talented. We no longer call it that. We call it Advanced Work. And he's been there for 12 years, and he works with young students in several Boston schools, elementary and middle schools, actually six to be exact. Tim's commitment to helping students learn and excel goes far beyond the classroom. One of the most far-reaching endeavors that he has taken on is cranes on the square at Copley Square. Each year, Tim and the students create an interactive origami display that invites passengers by to fold paper cranes in support of victims of the 2011 Japanese tsunami. Tim is a competent, goal-oriented, and caring teacher committed to making, learning the Japanese language and the culture of Japan meaningful for his students. And ladies and gentlemen, at a time when people point fingers at teachers, when people blame teachers for what's going on, we have many bright and shining stars like Tim who are in the classroom every day, not only dealing with students who are behind, but what Tim is working on every day is helping young people excel and take it to that next level. And I think it is fitting that he is honored with this Shattuck Award, and we should give it up for him.
And Dion Irish.
Counselor.
Down below, right in the microphone in front, please, if you would. Want to recognize all of the recipients.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. It's my honor to recognize Dion Irish, who has worked for many, many years in city government, who worked with my brother Terrence for probably 17 of those years. But before doing this, I want to thank the Municipal Research Bureau for recognizing all of our employees. You know, very often, we don't say "thank you." We don't write the "thank you" note to our employees, but we know that city government would not be where it is today without the sacrifices made by each of our employees. And before you, you see some of the best city employees that we have. So, this is a service that Municipal Research Bureau provides to us on an annual basis, and I want us to give a round of applause to Sam Tyler on behalf of his staff. Director of the Office of Fair Housing and Equity. Mr. Irish served, earned recognition thanks to the many collaborative programs he created and managed with other Boston government offices while working in the city's Inspection Services Department. As Assistant Commissioner at ISD, Mr. Irish founded the nationally-recognized Breathe Easy at Home program, which works with families to identify and eliminate triggers to asthmatic reactions and has grown to serve over 300 families annually. Two years ago, Mr. Irish left ISD for the Office of Fair Housing and Equity. Recently, he participated with representatives of four other city agencies to help create a comprehensive, long-range strategic housing plan that was recently announced by Mayor Walsh. It's my honor and privilege to present this resolution of City Council President Bill Linehan on behalf of all councilors to Mr. Dion Irish, Executive Director of the Office of Fair Housing and Equity, and recognition of the 2014 Shattuck Award.
So, you've met Timothy Nagaoka, and you've met Dion Irish. I would like to also present the other recipients. It's Robert P. Conley, Senior Budget Manager at Department of Neighborhood Development. Worked for 22 years in D and D. Paul Donga, who's a supervisor at Fire Protection Engineer. Paul has 28 years of public service. Ellen Hatch, Senior Management Analyst, Office of Budget Management. Began her career in 2004. The person with the most seniority here and someone who has worked over 30 years at ISD as a clerk, George Kincaid Jr., Associate Inspector Engineer. 1971, did you say? George? Yep, 1971. Even I was a kid back then. Barbara Thiel, Boston School Traffic Supervisor and School Crossing Guard. She serves at the Patrick Leiden School in West Roxbury. Amy Wilcox is now here with us. She's the Community Service Officer for the Boston Police Department in District 3 of Mattapan. We'd like to congratulate that. And then, last but not least, my high school buddy, Kevin J. Linsky. He's a Senior Civil Engineer, Department of Public Works, 41 years on the job. He's paved every street in the city at least three times. Time, I'd like to ask my colleagues to come up, and we could take a group photo. Anybody who would like to take pictures, you're welcome to come down in the well and take the photographs if you'd, yep, right here is fine. Okay? We can be on the sides, probably behind also. Yeah, how's that? Okay? If we stay back there? Molly says that all the councilors should be in the rear. No, you didn't say that. I know. No, Dion, stay right there. Move in. All right. Beware of all the lights. Are we there? Great. All right. Thank you. Another big hand for the 2014 Shattuck Award recipients.
I spotted you right away there when you were typing away. I said, "I haven't seen her since we were young." You looked the same.
I see I had the connection. It was unsuccessful.
I'll come and find you. I'll come and find you.
What does that say?
Kevin? Thanks for everything, especially your friendship. Thank you.
Put in my new password. Now it's working. Just low enough.
If anyone could work the magic, it's you.
Are you ready, Madam Clerk? Still don't have? All right. If there are no corrections to be made, the minutes of last week's meeting will stand approved. Seeing, hearing, no objections to the minutes, the minutes are so approved. Communications from His Honor, the mayor. Madam Clerk.
Docket number 1661. Message disapproving an ordinance amending the City of Boston Code, Ordinance Chapter 2-8.1, Salary of City Councilers, Docket Number 1471, passed by the City Council on October 8, 2014. Would you like me to read?
Yeah, please, read the mayor's communication.
Communication from Mayor Martin J. Walsh, October 24, 2014, to the City Council. Dear City Councilors, I return here with the disapproved docket number 1471, an ordinance amending the City of Boston Code ordinances, Chapter 2-8.1, Salary of City Councilors. The reason for my disapproval is the need for further independent analysis. The City Council is a vital partner in city government, and its members deserve some upward salary adjustment. However, more analysis is needed for such an adjustment. The system presently in place requires the Compensation Advisory Board to make recommendations, and without those recommendations, to the City Council is to put in the uncomfortable position of having to decide such a number for itself. The Compensation Advisory Board was dormant for a period of years until its report in 2013, but that report did not advise on appropriate compensation for the City Council. I believe that this body should be reconstituted. All current members are in holdover status. I will be appointing five individuals with a mandate to make recommendations within 90 days for how the salaries of City Councilors and other city officials outside of collective bargaining units should be adjusted. This would be, this would help to spear the council the uncomfortable position of having to justify its own salary increases. I believe that this methodology to addressing the important questions raised by the City Council will better allow us to continue our strong partnership in serving the people of Boston. Very truly yours, Martin J. Walsh, Mayor of the City of Boston.
Docket 1661 will be assigned to the Committee on Government Operations for Further Action. Madam Clerk, reports of public officers and others.
Docket number 1662, communication was received from the city clerk of the filing by the Boston Development Authority of the agreement between the City of Boston and the Third Amendment to the Report and Design of the St. Patrulph Terrace Apartments, Chapter 121A Project. Docket number 1663, notice was received from the mayor of the appointments of Daniel Gioroma to the Board of Examinants.
Docket 1662 and 1663 will be placed on file. Reports of committees, Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. President, would you like me to read 1594?
Yeah, would you read 1594, 1596, and 1599 and 1600 through 1602?
Docket number 1594, excuse me, the Committee on Public Safety, to which was referred on October 22, 2014, docket number 1594. Message and order authorized in the City of Boston to accept and expend funds of $1,750,000 from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security. Department of Fire Services for the Boston Fire Department Training Division submits a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docket number 1596, the Committee on Public Safety, to which was referred on October 22, 2014, docket number 1596. Message and order authorized in the City of Boston to accept and expend funds in the amount of $237,500 from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security. Department of Fire Services for the Boston Fire Department Hazardous Material Response Teams submits a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docket number 1599, the Committee on Public Safety, to which was referred on October 22, 2014, docket number 1599. Message and order authorized in the City of Boston to accept and expend the FY14 Port Security Grant Program funding in the amounts of $144,908 from the U.S. Department of Homeland Security for the purpose of providing supply items to port areas for the protection of critical port infrastructure from terrorism. Submits a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docket number 1600, the Committee on Public Safety, to which was referred on October 22, 2014, docket number 1600. Message and order authorized in the police commissioner to accept and expend the FY15 Traffic Enforcement Grant Funds of $140,000 awarded by the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security. Submits a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docket number 1601, the Committee on Public Safety, to which was referred on October 22, 2014, docket number 1601. Message and order authorized in the police commissioner to accept and expend a grant of $60,000 from the U.S. Department of Justice Organized Crime Drug Enforcement Task Force Program for the purpose of supporting crime prevention and law enforcement regarding working directly, I'm sorry, working directly with the United States Marshal Service. Submits a report recommending the order ought to pass. And docket number 1602, the Committee on Public Safety, to which was referred on October 22, 2014, docket number 1602. Message and order authorized in the police commissioner to accept and expend a grant of $23,500 to fund the FY14 Paul Coverdell National Forensic Science Improvement Program Grant funded by the National Institute of Justice, passed through the Boston, I mean the Massachusetts State Police. Submits a report recommending the order ought to pass.
Our chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Public Safety, Counselor Murphy, on dockets 1594, 1596, 1599, 1600 through 1602.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last Friday, the 24th of October, in the afternoon, the Committee on Public Safety met and held a hearing on these six docket matters. As Chair, I'm recommending passage of all six. Docket number 1594 is a grant from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for $1,750,000 to be used for training and equipment purchased by the Boston Fire Department Fire and Training Division. It's part of a six-year allocation. It's money that goes into people's, people buy fire insurance for their homes, and a dollar of everybody's policy goes to the state, and the state sends it to the cities and towns to continue with firefighter training and update their equipment. And that's what this 1.75 million is for. Docket 1596 is a $237,000 grant from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security to the Fire Department. It will be used by the Fire Department's Special Operations Program to cover firefighters' recertification program, equipment and training for the Boston Fire Hazmat Response Team. Then there were four other public safety grants. Docket 1599, a grant for $144,908 from the Department of Homeland Security, is a competitive grant awarded to the Boston Police Department for the purpose of purchasing supply items to secure port infrastructure from terrorism. It will be used to build a 50-by-10-foot floating dock to secure the boat lift for the 27-foot boat called the Night Cat Intercept. The City will provide matching funds to make up for any overages on this $144,000. Docket 1600 is a grant for $140,000 from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, and it is the FY15 Traffic Enforcement Grants. These funds are provided by the federal government to the state government and passed to cities and towns. The State Department of Public Safety and Security has total control on mobilization and overtime. Docket 1601 is a grant for $60,000 from the United States Department of Justice Organized Crime Enforcement Task Force Program, will be used to buy two new undercover vehicles for our organized crime task force. The purchase of these vehicles will go through the city or state procurement process under Chapter 30B. And docket 1602, a grant for $23,500 from the Paul Coverdell National Forensic Sciences Improvement Program. These funds will be used to fund staff development, training, and travel costs. It is a federal grant awarded to the Mass. State Police and passed down to the Boston Police Department Forensic Unit. It will not be used for personnel costs. Thank you. I hope you pass all six.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Murphy. So Counselor Murphy moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1594. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 1594 has been passed. Counselor Murphy moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1596. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 1596 has been passed. Counselor Murphy moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1599. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 1599 has been passed. Counselor Murphy moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1600. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 1600 has been passed. Counselor Murphy moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1601. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 1601 has been passed. And Counselor Murphy moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1602. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 1602 has been passed. Before I move on the next docket matter, I'd like to recognize someone who's in the audience with us today. He is the Chair of the Nipmark Council of Native Americans. His name is Kenneth White. Kenneth, would you rise? On the top of his card, it says, "Places of many beautiful lakes." And we should visit that. Is it Webster and Dudley? Are those the locations? Webster and Dudley? Are those the locations? Oh, okay. Thank you for being here. We're run by your presence, and at this time, Madam Clerk, please read docket 0389.
Docket 0389, the Committee on Government Operations, to which was referred on February 26, 2014, docket number 0389, an ordinance creating a commission on the status of Black men and boys in Boston, submits a report recommending the order ought to pass in a new draft.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, Counselor Flaherty, on docket 0389.
Thank you, Mr. President. This matter was sponsored by City Council Tito Jackson, referred to a committee back on February the 26th. We held two great off-site hearings in the community to receive feedback from the community about the goals and duties of the proposed commission. The commission is to examine issues impacting Black and Latino men and boys, and specifically the commission's duties would include working with city government on policy development, working with community outreach, implementation of programs, and legislative initiatives. Members would be appointed by the Mayor and confirmed by this body, and the commission would also meet quarterly and submit an annual report to both the Mayor and the City Council. This time, I'm recommending passage in a new draft, but will defer to the lead sponsor, Counselor Jackson, for his input and to explain the commission and the appropriate changes. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Jackson, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I rise first to thank Counselor Flaherty for the great work that he has done on bringing this forward. I want to thank several members of my staff, Michelle Sadler, Vasili Sevansai, Daniel Polanco, Justin Brown, and I also want to give a special thanks to a good friend who's helped us through this named Don Carlson. This, interestingly, and this was not planned, we actually, in February, which is Black History Month, put this forward as a commission on the status of Black men and boys. October, up to October 15, is actually Hispanic Heritage Month, and it's kind of ironic and punctuated that we're actually coming together. In this draft, you will see new language updating the title to include Latino men and boys. In all honesty, Mr. President, when we look at the state of Black and Latino men and boys in the City of Boston, we see that there are two cities, and not all of Boston is strong as we speak. Two-thirds of young men under the age of 19 in Boston are Black and Latino. And so it's really important that we really think of this not as only a Black and Latino issue, but really as an issue of the sustenance and the vitality of the City of Boston. If our city is going to continue to lead, if our city is going to continue to lead in higher ed, in technology, and in other areas, we need to make sure that we do right by these young men. And we know that unemployment rates for Black male, Black and Latino males through age 64 in the City of Boston, it's 21% for Blacks and 13% for Latinos. Citywide, obviously, we're under 5%. There's a disparity there, Mr. President, and even larger disparity when we look at the fact that our zip code, rather than our genetic code, actually punctuates how our life will turn out. When we look at the richest part of Back Bay versus the poorest part of Roxbury, and we look at life expectancy at birth, there's over 33-year difference in life expectancy at birth. Our council has led before, and we need to step up and lead again and do what's right to make sure that we deal with these disparities, that we reframe the imagery of these young men. And all of them are our young men. They live in every single one of our neighborhoods, and they affect and are connected with every one of our lives. Our council put forward legislation, actually, the day before the President stepped forward and put forward the My Brothers Keeper Initiative. We know that President Obama will not be in office forever, so it is important that our council step forward and codify this language to make sure that we continue to focus on this issue and that we continue, literally, to focus on the future of the City of Boston. And we do that today by coming together to form this commission. I would ask, and I know that we were blessed when this was put forward, all 13 of my colleagues actually stepped forward and signed on to it. I would, I'd look forward to unanimous consent today to make sure that we do what our council has done in the past and should do in the future, which is to take up important issues of disparities, to tear down walls where they used to exist, and build bridges where those walls were. Again, I want to thank everyone who has helped us on this. I want to thank the countless people in the audience who've come to the hearings, but also are working to do this work all over the city in their own lane. And if we all do a little bit on this issue, then no one has to do a lot, but it's our important time to step forward and to lead as a council and to create this first commission in the City of Boston on Black and Latino men and boys. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. Counselor Yancey.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I rise to commend the previous speaker, Counselor Jackson of District 7. I'd also like to commend the Chair of the Government Operations Committee for recommending passage. Mr. President, this is really long overdue. There's not a week that goes by that we don't learn of yet another disparity afflicting our young men of color. We have a women's commission in place, and my concern about the women's commission has always been this underfunded. Hopefully, that will not be a problem with this commission. But all you have to do is mention a few words. Ferguson, Missouri, a name, D.J. Henry. I'll take a look at the incarceration rates. Take a look at a report most recently issued by ACLU documenting that young men of color very often are presumed guilty until proven innocent. That's not the way society should operate today. So I enthusiastically support the creation of this commission. I think it's wise to add Latino young men as well, and I'm too urging passage at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Yancey. Counselor Preston.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise to commend Counselor Jackson for his leadership. We are at a crisis. The disparities have already been articulated today and many times prior to today across the spectrum for African-American and Latino young men in health, in education, in employment, and the confluence of these disparities is contributing to our school-to-prison pipeline. So this is long overdue. It is necessary so that we can be studied and prescriptive about how to improve these outcomes, these lives. And so Counselor Jackson, I want to thank you for your leadership, and as everyone knows, much of my work has been focused on girls and women, and that has certainly never been to the exclusion of our boys and men, because our destiny really is tied. And as Counselor Jackson is very fond of saying, we are all our brothers' keeper. And so I am looking forward to the establishment of this commission so that we can be studied and prescriptive and really walk the walk in honoring these young men and ensuring that they have the best chance and opportunity to be all that they can be, to positively contribute to the city, to this Commonwealth, and to our country. So it's a very proud day, and I look forward to unanimous passage.
Thank you, Counselor Preston. Counselor O'Malley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to commend my dear friend, the Counselor from District 7, Counselor Jackson, for his leadership on this issue, as well as the countless advocates, many of whom are with us in the chamber today, for their leadership in putting forward something that's very thoughtful, very important. I look forward to voting in the affirmative on this very important issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Zaken.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to commend a good colleague, Counselor Jackson. I had the pleasure of attending, I believe it was the first hearing on this docket. Counselor Flaherty chaired very well, and the attendance there, out in Counselor Jackson's district, I think, demonstrated, as well as the attendance here today, demonstrates, I believe, the need and the want in the community for this legislation. I think it's an incredibly important issue. I'm excited that so many of our colleagues have already spoken in favor, so many signed on initially. I also will be certainly voting in favor and look forward to working to make sure that this commission does the best that it can do to make sure everyone in all of our neighborhoods in the City of Boston has the same opportunities, as Counselor Jackson's fond of saying, of the Back Bay, which I do represent, but I believe that everyone in every zip code in this city should have those same opportunities. So I look forward to working with this commission and with my colleagues after passage. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Zaken. Please, if you could refrain from the applause. I mean, I know that you're excited, but it's just what we don't do here in council session, which is a formal session and meeting. So I appreciate what you do, but I'd ask you to hold your applause. Thank you. And so, most importantly, at this time, Counselor Flaherty moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0389 in a new draft. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 0389 has been passed in a new draft. Yes, Counselor Jackson doubts the vote. Madam Clerk, will you please read the roll?
Counselor Baker. Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Siomo. Counselor Siomo, yes. Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Jackson. Counselor Jackson, yes. Counselor Lamatina. Counselor Lamatina, yes. Counselor Linehan.
Yes.
Counselor Linehan, yes. Counselor McCarthy. Counselor McCarthy, yes. Counselor Murphy. Counselor Murphy, yes. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor O'Malley, yes. Counselor Presley. Counselor Presley, yes. Counselor Wu. Counselor Wu, yes. Counselor Yancey. Counselor Yancey, yes. And Counselor Zaken. Counselor Zaken, yes. Mr. President, we have a unanimous vote on docket number 0389.
Docket number 0389 has been passed in a new draft unanimously by the Boston City Council. Thank you. Madam Clerk, matters recently heard for possible action.
Docket number 1335, order for hearing to evaluate the Boston Public Schools Perkins Grant for the prior fiscal years.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Post Audit and Oversight, Counselor Yancey, on docket 13...
The Perkins Grant, which is intended to provide resources for vocational education in the City of Boston, we hear from the superintendent, we hear from many members of his staff, as well as several headmasters from various schools within the system. Mr. President, there are some lingering questions with regards to this grant, and because of that, I'm going to ask that this matter be remanded back to the Committee on Post Audit and Oversight until we get answers to many of the questions raised at that particular hearing, not the least of which was the level of discretion in terms of how these funds are allocated, roughly $1 million, and seems to be concentrated in one individual within the school department. It wasn't very clear what criteria was used. So we will continue to explore this, Mr. President, and I ask that this be remanded back to committee. Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you, Counselor Yancey. Madam Clerk, docket... Um, Madam Clerk, uh, docket 1335 will remain in the Committee on Post Audit and Oversight.
Docket number 1396, message and ordinance amending CBC ordinances, Chapter Four, requiring city vendors to safeguard unprotected road users.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, Counselor Flaherty.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this matter was sponsored by Mayor Walsh and referred to committee on September 10th. It's a 90-day order, so the Committee on Government Operations held a hearing, uh, yesterday to discuss this ordinance, which would require, uh, trucks and large vehicles, uh, over 10,000 pounds, who contract with the city to install safety guardrails and additional mirrors to reduce the risk of, uh, fatalities involving other road users, particularly, uh, and, uh, especially cyclists. And, uh, what they would do is they would prevent, uh, a cyclist from being dragged underneath, uh, the chassis and to be, uh, to be victims of the rear wheels. So, um, they did a pilot program, which, uh, seemed to provide, uh, some great data and some results, uh, which in turn has led to, uh, to this, uh, matter here. Uh, Counselor Presley, as everyone knows, uh, has done, uh, tremendous, uh, work on this issue. Uh, she's earned the respect of cyclists across the city, particularly from the cyclist union, and, uh, she led the effort, uh, at yesterday's hearing with respect to the questions. And we heard from a number of folks, we heard from bicy- bicycles, bicycle safety advocates, uh, we heard from the mayor's office of new urban mechanics, uh, we heard, uh, from citizens that, uh, were concerned about the high number of, uh, bicycle accidents involving large trucks, uh, particularly the, uh, number of fatalities that have occurred, uh, in our city. And so based on yesterday's hearing, uh, we've decided to make some minor changes. Uh, those changes were, uh, led by our colleague, Counselor Iana Presley. Uh, at this time, I'll defer, uh, to her, but I am recommending, uh, passage in a new draft, and, uh, Counselor Presley can explain, uh, some of those minor changes that, uh, resulted as, uh, from our hearing. Thank you, Mr. President.
Uh, thank you, Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Presley.
Oh, right. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. President, and, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, for expediting, uh, the hearing, uh, for this ordinance. I want to also, uh, thank, uh, James Sutherland and my staff, who for the last, uh, three years has been our lead, uh, on all issues, uh, related to improving, uh, uh, safety for multimodal, uh, transit, uh, in particular for, uh, our cyclists. Um, as you all know, since 2012, after there was a surge in fatalities and near fatalities with cyclists and, uh, and motor vehi- motor vehicles, um, I pushed, uh, along with the cyclists, a union for a hearing, and in that hearing, uh, we pushed for a crash data report, um, so that we could, um, be more concerted in informing where we make investments in infrastructure, um, and knowing, um, what were some of the, the more vulnerable, um, intersects. Um, and we're grateful that that report, uh, came out, um, and it has, uh, informed the investments that we make. Um, ultimately, if we want to promote walking and cycling as healthy and environmentally-friendly transit methods, we need to make sure everyone feels safe using our city streets. Uh, this ordinance, which I am honored to have partnered with Mayor Walsh on, is its first in the nation to protect pedestrians and cyclists. Um, as you all know, large trucks are cumbersome and dangerous, especially when trying to navigate many of the city's congested streets. And while these large trucks are already equipped with passenger safety mechanisms, uh, they are not designed or equipped with pedestrian and cyclist safety in mind. Data from other cities suggests that installation of these safety measures, side guards, convex mirrors, and decals will prevent fatalities and reduce the risks of a collision of trucks with pedestrians and cyclists. This is truly a life-saving ordinance. It applies to future contracts only. The city estimates of, uh, basically roughly 40 impacted contracts, uh, and about 250 trucks per year will need to be retrofitted with these safety features. Once installed, these safety features last the lifetime of the vehicle. So this is really cost-neutral, it's going to save lives, um, we'd be the first, uh, in the country, as, uh, the chairman alluded to, we had a very successful pilot program already. And so I want to thank, uh, Mayor Walsh, uh, for his leadership, and the cyclist union for their advocacy and their partnership on this, and I respectfully ask you to vote in support of the ordinance. Um, you do have in your packet, uh, specific technical, uh, revisions, uh, which, uh, if the chair will indulge me, I'm happy to officially cite, uh, since Chairman Flaherty indicated, uh, that I would. Okay. So again, um, at the, at the hearing yesterday, uh, Chairman Flaherty and I had inquired about how many vehicles we were talking about. At that time, they were unable to provide us with that approximate number. We now have that, as I just indicated in my statement, so the best estimate is, uh, um, 40-plus construction contracts, which is around 250 trucks per year. This will decrease over time since the guards and mirrors last the lifetime of the vehicles. Uh, quick summary of technical revisions, uh, there were formatting changes made throughout the document just to be consistent. Section four through 8.4, a sentence was added at the closing to include provisions for future safety improvements based on changing technology. This would allow the city to pilot not types of products and technologies, and upon evaluation, provide them as an option to vendors as a way to enhance the safety of their vehicle. It may also include new materials for side guards to provide better injury prevention. Section four dash 8.5C includes a clarification of the reason specifically for convex mirrors and assistance in placement of those mirrors. This change highlights the need to see the blind spots on the sides of a vehicle, while section D refers to the blind spot in front of a large vehicle with a specific cab configuration. Section four dash 8.5E reflects the proper number of decals for blind spot awareness, both sides, and a rear sticker to alert pedestrians and cyclists. Chairman Flaherty asked a number of questions, um, in addressing the blind spot issue. Uh, section five, or point five, rather, section four dash 8.6 reflects the inclusion of any known incidents with cyclists or pedestrians and side guards as reported by Boston EMS or Boston Police. Anything else, Mr. Chairman?
We all set?
Anything I'm missing? Okay. All right, thank you, everyone, for indulging, uh, a lengthy reading.
Uh, thank you, Counselor Preston. Uh, Counselor Flaherty moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1396 in a new draft. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 1396 has been passed in a new draft. I'm informed by the clerk that there is one late-file matter, which in absence of objection will be added to the agenda. Hearing no objection, the matters are so added, the clerk will read the first, the only late-file matter.
Offered by City Councilor Iana Presley, in the city of Boston, resolution in support of Boston University Custodial Maintenance and Trade Staff. Whereas Boston recognizes that the custodial maintenance and trade staff at Boston University work hard to provide a clean and safe environment for the students and faculty of Boston University, therefore be it resolved that the Boston City Council requests that Boston University settle a fair contract with the members of 32BJ that provides fair wages and affordable health insurance to all custodial maintenance and trades staff.
Counselor Presley, on that one and only late-file matter.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. Um, uh, I apologize for the late file, but there is a sense of urgency since this is the final week of negotiations. Um, also, uh, there was a clerical error, uh, and Counselor Jackson's name, uh, was left off, so if you would please add him as a co-sponsor.
Clark, please add.
This is very straightforward, um, these are the sorts of actions regularly taken by this body in the interest of workers' rights. This is about good jobs, fair wages, and affordable health insurance. I request, uh, suspension of the rules and adoption of this resolution.
Uh, thank you, Counselor Presley. Counselor Zakeham.
Jackson as a co-sponsor to speak before me, but I-
He pressed the light first, that's all, and I, I am in charge.
All right, thank you. I'll, I'll be brief then, Mr. President, um-
No, I mean, he, he pressed the light after you, and I, and-
Well, I, okay, well, I, um-
We'll give Counselor Jackson plenty of time.
I, well, I applaud Counselors Presley and Jackson for bringing this forward. I had the opportunity to meet with, uh, members of, uh, 32BJ earlier this week, and it is an urgent matter. I think the late file, um, was the only way to get this in in time, and I think it's incredibly important that this body speaks, as we often do, in favor of workers. BU has been, uh, I think, a good employer in the past and has really set a high standard, and there's no reason, uh, for them to go backwards. I think this council, as we often talk about, issues of equality and justice and opportunity for everyone in our communities, we need to make sure that we are telling one of our good, I believe BU to be a good institutional citizen of the city of Boston, and I think we need to make sure that they remember that obligation and, uh, and continue to act as a good employer. So thank you both, Counselors Jackson and Presley, for bringing this forward.
Uh, thank you, Counselor Zakeham. Counselor Jackson.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I want to, uh, thank, uh, Counselor Presley, uh, for her leadership on this work. I also, uh, at a time when we have, uh, several counselors, uh, doing great work on this issue of pilot, I want to thank Counselor Murphy for his work. I want to thank Counselor, uh, Zakeham, uh, for his work, um, and the council as a whole, uh, for that work. We have to make sure that these colleges and universities are doing right, uh, not only by the city, but also by, uh, the workers. Um, it is a me- an amenity that we all pay for. Um, over 50% of the landmass in the city of Boston is actually in the hands of nonprofits. And, uh, the deal that we have with them is, uh, based on them doing good things. Um, and, and in this light, uh, Boston University, uh, currently has, uh, some pretty good standard. Uh, they actually have some pretty good healthcare, uh, but what they're, uh, attempting to do is to walk away from, uh, the wages, uh, how many part-time workers, uh, and we've heard this before, we've been here before, uh, where, uh, there's, uh, a, a want to increase the number of part-time workers, um, and also, um, to deal with, uh, this issue of, uh, earn sick time, uh, that we, we all support. Um, so I think it's a really important, uh, component that we hold, uh, every thousand universities feet to the fire on taking, uh, care of their workers and doing right, uh, by these folks. And, and knowing that, um, these aren't folks who are in front of a classroom teaching. Uh, most of these, uh, folks are people who are working and usually unseen, uh, to allow people in, uh, at, at these schools, uh, that raise their tuitions every single year, uh, to be able to go to clean classrooms, to, uh, be able to, uh, walk across well-manicured grass, um, and to, uh, be in a, in a safe environment. Um, the least that, uh, Boston University can do, uh, is to take care of their workers. Uh, so I think we need to send, uh, to send a strong message and hold the line that we've held, uh, that we believe in workers' rights. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Uh, thank you, Counselor Jackson. And, uh, Counselor Siomo raised his hand, asked, asked his name to be added. Counselor Flaherty. Um, Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Wu. Counselor Yancey. Counselor Zakeham. Counselor McCarthy. Counselor Mur- Counselor Murphy. Counselor Lamatina. Counselor Baker, and please add my name. Um, so Counselor Presley moves that the first late-file, uh, resolution, uh, be, be adopted. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the first late-file matter has been adopted. All right, anybody wishing to remove, uh, matter from the green sheets may do so at this time. Seeing no green lights, we'll move on. I've, uh, been informed, uh, by the clerk that, um, uh, Counselor O'Malley's father is in the audience, and we should recognize him. The day that we were sworn in, when Counselor O'Malley was sworn in, I got in the elevator with, with Mr. O'Malley, and he said, "Keep an eye on him." And we have. Yeah. He's done an extraordinary job, and I'm sure you're proud. Um, no green sheets? There, uh, there's one late, uh, late, late-file matter which in objection, which in absence of objection will be added to the consent agenda. Seeing and hearing no objection, the matters are so added. The Chair moves adoption of the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the consent agenda is adopted. Counselor Presley, for what purpose do you rise?
Unanimous consent to make an announcement.
You have the floor.
And also to express my gratitude. Um, I just wanted to take a moment to thank all of you for wearing purple today. Um, October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and, um, as I often say, wearing the ribbon or having awareness month is not the work, it's the reminder to do the work and to do that work year-round, and all of you are certainly, uh, playing a part in that, and I just wanted to thank you for your partnership, um, and just really underscore why it's important, uh, that we send a signal of solidarity, um, to those who are living in fear, um, who have broken bodies and spirits and feeling isolated and alone. I want to thank, uh, the advocates, uh, such as Jane Doe and Casa Mirna, for what they do year-round to support victims and getting on a pathway to becoming survivors. And, uh, again, I want to thank all of you for, uh, for wearing, uh, purple today in solidarity with those, um, who are suffering in silence. The bottom line is domestic violence is not a family affair, it is a crime. Uh, and so I thank all of you, uh, for sending that message today, and I look forward to, at the close of the meeting, uh, taking a photo. Thank you.
So nobody leave. All right. Um, it, uh, thank you, Counselor Presley. Um, Counselor Wu, for what purpose do you rise?
Unanimous consent to, uh, comment on the announcement.
Um, you have the floor.
Uh, just wanted to note that Casa Mirna had hosted, uh, Policymaker's Breakfast very recently, uh, the goal was to, to let survivors tell their stories directly and also discuss the many ways in which domestic violence interacts with so many other issues that we are dealing with on the council, with tie-ins to housing and economic stability and, uh, youth and, and families and trauma. Uh, so I just wanted to know that in all of our work daily, we have an opportunity to, to recognize domestic violence as well. Uh, one quote from the CEO or the, the executive director of the agency that stuck out to me, she said, "Domestic violence thrives on silence, and the solution is community." So we are all a part of that community. Uh, one concrete example of that is a recent partnership between Casa Mirna Vasquez and the BHA, where, um, the BHA had, has, uh, often unfortunately women, but survivors come in person to residential managers' offices when they apply for that emergency domestic violence transfer. They were just collecting their contact information and then sending them back and filing the transfer, and that was it. Uh, in partnership with Casa Mirna, now they are trained in how to speak to these survivors, how to ask the right questions to find out, is there a safe time and place to contact you? Can we put you in touch with more services in different languages? And on the flip side, BHA has trained Casa Mirna, and I think they said they had 50 advocates from different organizations to understand the rules and regulations so that those domestic violence survivors who come to them, who also need housing, uh, have a better idea of how to help them navigate the system. So there are many other potential opportunities to reach out to survivors, and just ask that everybody always keep that in the back of your minds, and everybody looks great in purple.
Uh, thank you, Counselor Wu. So at this time, I'd ask all guests and all members to please rise as the council prepares to adjourn, uh, today's meeting in the memory of the following individuals. For the Chair, Counselor Murphy and Counselor Wu, uh, Paul Allen Simon, Paul Simon's father. For, for the Chair and Counselor Flaherty, Marjorie Flaherty. For Counselor Siomo, Rose Ann Brady. For Counselor Lamatina, Bishop M. Thomas Shaw, Society of St. John de Evangelho. For Counselor McCarthy, William Consalvo, Rob's uncle, and Nora Dunn. For Counselor Mur- Murphy, Timothy Galvin. For Counselor Presley, John Lachlan and Maria Sanchez. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals, and is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, November 5th, 2014, at 12 o'clock noon. All those in favor of adjournment say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the council is adjourned. Thank you.[1747.58][1747.58]